All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with today's meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Apologize for getting a little late start. Got a lot going on today, and thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and get started, as we always do, with the invocation and the pledge. And we're really excited to have with us today, yes, excuse me.
She's here.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn District Five, turn it over to District Five to introduce the individual who's gonna lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always, this is always an honor. I know we all take turns in inviting special people to come to our meetings to be able to kick us off, but I do have a good friend who is here. She is a pillar in the community, particularly out there in Levine, and been involved in so many different activities out there. And she actually serves on my parks board as my member. So Isabel Chavez will lead us today in our prayer and our pledge. Thank you, Isabel.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Supervisor. I'm a bit winded, 'cause I couldn't find parking. But I hope this means all the same to you, even if it's a little winded. Lord, I'd like to take this time to pray for our most marginalized communities, the people that are out suffering in our county, in our state, in our world, especially those that are walking amongst us here in the county streets, suffering from mental illness, whatever afflictions have them there. May you guide our elected officials today in being mindful of every aspect of their lives and ours, in helping them make decisions that affect us all. I ask this in your name. Amen. And if you could join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, thank you, Isabel. Winded and all, that was lovely. And you can bet assure that I am going to laugh about this for a long time. But anyways, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming and participating with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, and I would echo those comments. Thanks so much for your words. Thanks for joining us today and then getting through the parking and traffic challenges down here. So with that, I will turn it to Madam Clerk for the role.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Chukri.
Present.
Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Gates.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. As oftentimes we have at our meetings of the County Board of Supervisors, we're very excited today to be joined by Jose Santiago with Maricopa County Animal Care and Control, and a friend.
Got a sexy devil in front of me. Can't tell by his outfit. This little guy here is Marcus, who's not very little. I'm almost not sure I could pick him up, 'cause he has solid muscle, if you can't tell. He also is missing one of his legs. He is missing one of his hind legs. He was hit by a car and did come into the shelter with that severe leg injury. And one of our vets, Dr. Hildy, she was able to amputate the leg. And you can tell, and the audience can tell, he gets along just fine with three legs. A lot of people don't realize that 70% of the dog's weight goes on their front legs. And so when they lose a hind leg, it's easier for them to adjust. So that's why he's able to move like this. He's one of our long-timers at the shelter, so we're hoping that somebody out there will need someone to love on Valentine's Day and get him out. He's only $25 at our west shelter at 27th Avenue in Durango, and he's a lover, if you can't tell. He should be a one and only dog, though. We say that he has so much love to give, he can't bear the thought of sharing you with another furry friend. So he just wants to be your one and only. We're also very happy to announce that we are probably in the first time in maybe two or three years in the green zone at the shelter. And that means that we have almost 50 kennels in our outside space and quite a few kennels in our inside space. We are doing everything we can to save so many lives, and people are coming forward and adopting, and we couldn't be more grateful. We have a little bit of breathing room, but we know there's still a lot of work still to be done, and we are gonna continue to work hard, and hopefully we can stay in this space for a couple of days more. Notice I said "days," because we will be filling up rather quickly, but we're grateful for the time we have now. So that's what we have at the shelter.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, and thanks for all that you do, and hopefully it will be a Happy Valentine's Day for him.
Hope so.
All right. Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there will be a couple of continuances in the P and Z section, and also on page 21 of your agenda, on patent easement abandonment number 0068. There is a request to continue that patent easement abandonment for two weeks to your February 27th meeting. So maybe when we get there, you can either take a motion now to continue it, or when we get to item number 11.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue at this time?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would like to continue items PZ2, PZ3, and PZ4 when it comes to the northern crossing, in order to allow the applicant opportunity to document plan for water and sewer service availability.
All right. I have a motion. Thank you very much for that, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of that motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion to continue passes unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, that would be to the...
Oh, to a date certain, to continuance to the February 27th.
To the February 27th. Thank you.
Board, Mary.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And item 11, are we, I guess, wait till we get to that item?
You can do it now.
You can wait.
Okay.
And then, did we have any other continuances on the planning and zoning?
I believe there is also a request to continue PZ10 to the March 13th meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. I would make that motion to continue PZ10 to the March 10th meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of that motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion also passes unanimously. All right. So then that leaves us with the rest of the consent agenda, other, under planning and zoning. PZ1, Merrill Gardens Anthem Cottage, PZ5 and PZ6, Rancho Cabrillo Parcels GNU and Q, PZ7, Ephesus Ranch Tower Project, and PZ8 and PZ9. Eight, I always butcher this one. I just look over to Supervisor Hickman.
Arabydi.
Thank you. Derry, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the assist there, Supervisor Hickman. So on all of these items, the others have been continued, do I have a motion with respect to these items?
Motion to approve all said items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hickman.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. And this now takes us to PZ11, and PZ11 is the Seasons at Riverside item. And I understand we have a number of folks here to speak on this item, and just wanna briefly go over the rules on this, on this item. Today, we have an applicant with us, and then we also have people speaking in opposition to this. So the applicant will have 10 minutes to address this item, and then the opposition will have 10 minutes, and they can divide that up however they would like. So just wanted to make sure everyone understood those ground rules. But before we get to that, we are joined by our planning and zoning director, Jen Pacorski. Jen, thank you for joining us. And Darren Gerard, Deputy Director, and do you have a presentation on this item for us?
I do. Thank you, Chairman Gates and members of the board. Just wanted to clarify before I get started, was the continuance for the LaBorde property to March 10th or March 13th? I believe, I believe the board meeting is on the 13th. Am I correct? I don't know if I was looking at my...
Yes. Did I speak and say the 10th? I think that because it was PZ10, I said 10.
It's all the clerk's fault. Minutes and double correcting.
I could've misheard it, but I just wanted to clarify for myself.
I should've been more prepared. I apologize, Madam Clerk. We'll both take the blame. So I would revise that motion to have it continued, Mr. Chairman, to March 13th, and thank you for noting that.
Perfect. We'll note that in the record. Thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you.
That, please proceed.
KZ28068 is a request to rezone approximately 37 acres at the southwest corner of El Mirage and Maryland Avenue from R-110 RUPD to R-16 RUPD. And the proposed density is 3.43 dwelling units per acre. This property is within City of Glendale's planning area, and Glendale's general plan designates the property as medium-density residential, which is about 2.5 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. So it's consistent with Glendale's general plan, this rezoning request. The surrounding area, as you can see from this map, is an eclectic mix of rural zoning, schools, and utility sites to the, make sure I can work this, oops, I think it disappears. But, so it's a mix of rural zoning and schools and utilities to the north and the west. Also, to the west is an R-18, proposed rezoning. El Mirage Road and an aggregate mine in the riverbed are to the east. And then the Wigwam Creek subdivision to the south, which you can see in the darker pink on that map, is zoned R-16 RUPD, which is similar and consistent with this proposed rezoning. The neighbors have raised several concerns about the proposal, including increased traffic and inadequate buffers between the new development and the existing homes. So I'm gonna briefly review the RUPD standards and site plan as recommended by staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. It's my understanding that Supervisor Hickman and the applicant have continued to meet with the community following the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, so the applicant may be proposing some additional changes to address citizen concerns, but I will review what's been recommended for approval as of today. So the R-16 RUPD overlay as currently proposed, and if you could flip to the site plan, back up, back one. It allows, so the RUPD currently allows for increase in lot coverage and a decrease in lot size as compared to the standard R-16 zoning. The majority of lots, which are in that orange on that site, will be 45 feet wide, but in response to concerns from the neighbors, the lots on the north and the west side of the property, which are adjacent to the one-acre lots that are existing, will be 90 feet wide and limited to single-story homes. The developer will also be required to provide a designated left-turn lane on Maryland Avenue, which is to the north, to access the site at 124th Drive. The main entrance is off of El Mirage, which you can see on the east side. And they're also going to be required to submit a traffic impact study to McDOT to determine the timing and phasing of any additional improvements that might be needed to alleviate the traffic concerns. So in summary, we believe this proposal is consistent with the area's mix of densities and uses. Also, it addresses some of the neighbors' concerns, and staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission therefore recommended approval. However, if you go to the next slide, over 20% of the parcels in number and area within 300 feet of the side, have, of the site, have registered opposition, so therefore a supermajority vote has been triggered. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues?
No, I'd like to hear from, from all sides of this, of this topic, so if I could get to hear from the applicant, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairmembers of the Board. Brendan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of the applicant Richmond American Homes. Staff did a great job on their presentation in terms of what the request is. I can tell you that we have tried to work closely with, with staff, with neighbors, with the Supervisor's office, to try to create a plan that certainly is consistent, first and foremost, with good planning principles. Secondly, we think it does provide an appropriate buffer and transition between the different residential properties to our west and southwest, and to some of those uses to the east. And we believe it's certainly consistent with the development that's occurred in the area, and specifically as you look along El Mirage Road. We're certainly appreciative of staff's recommendation for approval, and appreciative of the unanimous Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval. There was a considerable amount of testimony provided at that meeting, and I think at the end, that commission was very complimentary of the efforts that Richmond has made to try to mitigate some of those concerns. We're certainly okay with the conditions of approval, and we would request this board's approval. To very briefly just orient those that are here and may be watching, the site is outlined in orange there, and you can kind of see it in context of the surrounding area. Staff indicated that there is a mix of things around, including Wigwam Creek to the south, rural lots to our west and southwest. But as we get a little bit closer, you can kind of start to see how that takes place, with the charter school on the north, those facilities, facilities at our southeast portion of the site, and you'll notice, too, the mine and, and part of Glendale Municipal Airport on the east. I think the other thing that's important to note when you look at this site is there are considerable amount of topographical challenges from drainage that impact the site with, you can start to see it on there. The site drains from the northwest to the southeast, and then kind of runs along our southeast property, continuing south to that middle school. So as staff indicated, this is where we're trying to get to, and they did a good job presenting it, and I just want to show you this plan, and won't belabor the request, but just merely emphasize that it is 126 lots, the density is 3.43, which is consistent with the City of Glendale's general plan. So I think the other thing that's important to note as we look at this is, is the potential impact on the surrounding areas, and we believe that we've done a good job. There is no pedestrian or vehicular access to those communities to the west and southwest, no vehicular connection. All of our access is primarily off of El Mirage. We, unlike a lot of other communities in there, have a direct frontage on El Mirage and need to deal with those constraints. So as we look, again, I won't spend too much time on this slide, but you can start to see the color codes represent the various different lots that exist out there today, including the light blue, which is Wigwam Creek to the south. That has a mix of lot sizes between 45 and 56, and what we are proposing along El Mirage, like Wigwam Creek, is certainly consistent with what's taking place in the area. I mentioned the planning principles, and as staff showed you on their slide, that's a little close-up of what we are proposing in terms of the R-16 transitioning to the R-18. And you can see the R-16 zoning for Wigwam Creek as it transitions to R-17 and continuing further to the west. I want to touch briefly on the neighborhood outreach and kind of run through that. We did have our unofficial neighborhood meeting on August 15th. There was good turnout. We heard a variety of concerns, and this was the site plan that was presented at that. And as you can see, it's a little bit different than the one that's before you today, in that that site plan had 144 lots. There was no 90-foot-wide lots. Our entrance was located a different place, and so some of the things we heard was it was too dense, increased traffic, and looking at our entrance. Following that, we did have another unofficial meeting on September 11th. Good turnout, where we presented an updated plan, they tried to address those concerns, got some more feedback, and ended up going back to the drawing board. On October 4th and continuing through January, we did have discussions with, one of the neighbors presented the plan that's before you today to try to address those. And just to highlight quickly what those changes were, you can see the yellow, the light-yellow lots, those are the 90-foot-wide or 10,000-square-foot lots, because we heard the concern about buffer and wanting to mitigate that. We moved our entrance along Maryland further to the east. We opened up the southwest corner of the site to provide more open space there. We do abut two existing neighbors on our southwest, excuse me, on our west and southwest. The other thing that we did, as staff indicated, was a one-story restriction, and those areas highlighted in magenta are where we are proposing a one-story restriction, and that is reflected in the conditions of approval. So since then, I know there were some questions, and I just want to touch briefly on the traffic, because there were some unanswered questions of the residents as we came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. And one of the things dealt with, what's Maryland Avenue gonna look like? You'll see there that that is a cross-section. And on the cross-section beneath the aerial, that shows on the left-hand side of that dark, that black line, those are the new improvements. So what exists today is approximately 21 feet of asphalt. With this development, in addition to improvements along El Mirage, we are going to add an additional 32 feet, a little more than that, of new asphalt to make it so that the traffic flows better there, so that the school that you can see is that red building there is able to function safely. And we have had discussions with that charter school immediately that's north. They are supportive of our request. We just kind of got that information yesterday. There's a couple of things that we do, that are important to them, that we're gonna work through with McDOT, hopefully, and the Supervisor's office, one of which was trying to look at maybe a crosswalk for that school, and then looking at speed signs along there as well. Again, trying to create a safe environment for not only people walking there, but children as they access, as they go to that school. The other issue that's come up, that as we've had conversations, especially with Supervisor Hickman's office, dealt with the mining operations to the east. And under his direction, he wanted us to go back and look and see what we could do regarding that mine, and that it wasn't gonna go away anytime soon. And so there's two things that we worked on. And the first is an additional stipulation that's up on the screen. I know Planning Staff has a copy of it as well. We want an additional stipulation that provides, that requires that we provide an additional separate disclosure to our home buyers. That separate written disclosure will be an addendum to purchase contracts, CCNRs will be included in the public subdivision report, as well as a note on the final plat that will say the mine's there, it's gonna continue, and it's going to be there, and it's a legal use. The other thing that we did was we modified the site plan, and as you can see on this slide right here, that reflects the modifications that we're proposing. Initially, the plan that was approved by Planning and, recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning, we had a number of lots that backed up to El Mirage. We've since relocated those lots, and that's the updated site plan, and we would request that this body approve that as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but we believe that it's appropriate, that this develop is appropriate for this challenging site, that it's consistent with good planning principles, provides the necessary transition, and we're certainly appreciative, again, of staff and the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation, and would request this body's approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, will I have the ability to ask Brendan some questions after, after the other side speaks?
Absolutely.
If I need to.
Absolutely, as well. I think, I actually think there's probably about a minute and 33 seconds left on there.
We can save a minute and 33 if I have a question for you. Okay.
Excellent. Anyone else? Any questions at this time? I did want to read, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I did, I did want to note here for the record that we do have a speaker slip in favor of this item from Janice Ramirez, who is actually with the Crown Charter School. You're certainly free to speak, but it does, it would cut into that, that time left there, so I'll leave it up to you all, how you want to utilize the about minute and 33 seconds there.
Thanks, thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's just a small concern here. I mean, it's huge to the school, but I won't take much of your time. We are concerned about the safety, and I know that we did receive assurance, first of all, that we will have a left and right turn available at the end of Maryland onto El Mirage, but our biggest concern is temporary, ruling in favor of temporary school signs, school zone signs, and 15 mile-per-hour signs as well, crosswalk and stop signs. I know that permanently, they might go in there, but we want something temporary so that the safety of our students, which are currently in session, is definitely in favor of. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for what you do to educate our young people, and thanks for those, those very important concerns that you raised with regard to safety. With that, then, we have several speakers here in opposition who have provided speaker slips, and I can read those names into the, into the record real quick, and then I'll go ahead and, and invite one particular person up to speak, and then again, it's, it's free to you to, how you want to divide up the 10 minutes. Allison Bounds in opposition, Carol Frisson in opposition, Kathleen Ross in opposition, Victoria Valenzuela in opposition, Julia Frisson in opposition, Kevin Ross in opposition as well. With that, at this time, I spoke with Supervisor Hickman, and we would invite Allison Bounds up to speak. And you're there already. Look at that, right on cue. Thank you very much for joining us today. Thank you very much for joining us today and to come and speak about this important item.
Right. Since our time is limited, I'm not going to hit a lot of this, but if you look at the diagram, all of the properties surrounding the Seasons at Riverside have conformed to the present zoning that they had. Seasons, it's gone from R-10 to R-6, 5,175 square-foot lots. Wigwam Creek that they keep referring to, that's on the north side of Bethany, the average lot size is 7,810 square feet with no lot size smaller than 6,160. So if they want to be comparable to the items that they are discussing on our side of the street and adjacent, they need to have larger lot sizes. As you look at the diagram, the next one over is Maryland Ridge, which will be coming before you next month. We talked to that developer, and he has retained the R-18 zoning, he's worked with the community to help keep the property stable. Our property and all surrounding areas is over a 50-year length, and the zone change that Seasons is proposing is going to enhance the property of their value over what it would normally be. So you're taking, all the other developers are developing within their zone, Falcon View, which is another Richmond American Homes, their R-110, 12,518 square foot is their lot size. So all the other developers in our area are conforming to the zoning that they have now. Richmond American Homes at the Seasons is asking for almost a half reduction over what they have. Now, you know, we don't know what the economy's going to do next month, next year may be a whole different thing, we may have a downturn, but 2008, we had a downturn, a lot of people lost their homes, a lot of people walked away, and everyone from Maricopa County to homeowners everywhere suffered. These homes are starter homes, we've invested our time, our money, and our energies to live here, we have a certain character out here. There's not very many places you can go to today within the city area and have this type of property. So we have tried to work, and they have made accommodations for us, we came to an impasse. We are willing to work with them, we want you to continue this until we actually get to resolution, like we did with other developers. Our bottom line is, we want at least 65-foot lot sizes, which is much less than the R-110 to begin with. You know, you look at the people coming into Arizona, a lot of them are coming from California, and they're escaping because of property taxes and everything else. We had 262,000 people come in last year, according to 2017 census, and actually, when you look at the countries that are coming in, Mexico has the largest percentage of people coming in, 56%. So when you look at the schools and how many kids and what the area's like, we're unique, we're not, we can't take a national average of school impacts or those statistics because we are different. I don't know if you know that on the school that they keep referring to, Crown Charter School, parents have to drop off and pick up their children from school every day. You've got accidents happening on a weekly basis, sometimes daily, there was an accident a couple days ago. The kids in the neighborhood are witnessing these accidents. It's an unsafe condition, and you guys need to make sure that whatever happens here, that the citizens that you're representing are protected. Sheriff's Department, I don't know where they're at, I've tried to find out information on what kind of impacts it's going to be for the infrastructure, but these are the considerations you need to take in regards to this. The next slide is... Okay, and I do have a, actually, everyone within the 300-foot perimeter, this is an error, signed the protest petition. So everyone, except for the mining and other issues, but I have the paperwork besides that, that's showing the two parts. And then we're back to the renters. Wigwam Creek North, this is updated in real time, Wigwam Creek North, 48% of renters. We are established community, we have property value at stake, our property will continue to increase, but if we have these starter homes come in, and then we have recession, which has happened right across the street from us, and we end up with almost half rental homes, you're destroying the efforts and the property values and what we have, and so I'm asking you to set a continuance, let us continue working over the next month with the developer and with Richmond American until we can come to consensus, like we did with other developers and like other developers are doing. Thank you. Stop my time, sorry, it took way too long.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues?
Just a quick one. Allison, do you feel that you and Carol were heard when you came, when you came to my office and talked?
Absolutely. Absolutely, I did, you know, it's, I really appreciate the time that we had, and I'm hoping we can get everybody in because I blew it on my time.
That's okay. We'll work diligently towards that.
Excellent. Any other questions? If not, then Carol Frisson? Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for, thank you for permitting us to speak. My name is Carol Frisson, I live at 6107 North 127 Thamano. Okay. From increased density, we have lots of other issues. I would like to speak about water, land subsidence, and earth fissures. Excellent document, available online, dated October of 13, 2013, titled "Revisiting Earth Fissures Near Luke Air Force Base." A couple of statements there, I can only hit a couple. Large-scale groundwater withdrawal and excessive recharge can result in land subsidence, which can lead to formation of earth fissures. The maximum land subsidence near Luke is 18.2 feet. They've been withdrawing water since the late 30s for agricultural use. Summary, groundwater withdrawal and associated land subsidence is ongoing in the Luke Basin. With continued land subsidence comes the possibility for growth and extension of the earth fissures. Marbella Ranch, about half-mile from Seasons, north of Glendale. One of the stipulations, they must tell buyers and notify them in various ways that the property is within an area of known land subsidence and earth fissuring. This is from the White Tank Grand Avenue Plan, maybe you can read it quickly. Water levels have decreased 300 to 550 feet, that was as of 1986. Wells, these are, we sorted this by non-exempt wells, non-exempt wells are defined as wells generally used for municipal irrigation and industry. The radius of that circle is one and one-half miles, it's located, the center's located near Seasons. The dark blue circles with the X's, notice one dot marks three wells, those are six wells belonging to Value Utilities Water Company, they will be supplying water for Seasons, they supply water for me. So they're sucking the water out right underneath where the development is, right underneath where we live. I would like to mention very quickly, two wells, which are exempt wells. One of those is right up next to Seasons, it's the Welch Well. An exempt well, they can pump a limited amount of water for domestic use, non-commercial irrigation of less than two acres and watering slot. The Welch Well was drilled and completed, we have the well drillers' reports, and 219 of '02, about 17 years ago. The depth of water at that time was 125 feet. Less than a half-mile from there, last year, the Donwell, also an exempt well, was drilled on 11/14/18, the depth to water was 285 feet. We think those wells are close enough, it looks like maybe the water table is lowering right where the development is, right where we live. Okay, I'll stop at that point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Frisson? All right, thank you. So we've got about a minute and a half left here. Kathleen Ross, would you like to add some comments?
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a video. Oh, there we go. This is the traffic on El Mirage, and as you can see, the cars coming out, that is Maryland, and I'm not less concerned with traffic on Maryland, but I'm very concerned with the traffic on El Mirage. As you could see, it's only single lane, and I know the developer hasn't mentioned about doing a turn-in lane into El Mirage. There's a lot of accidents, like Allison mentioned, there was one just two days ago. Half a mile down the road, there's going to be 1,260 homes being developed, so that's going to add to this traffic on El Mirage. And then also, my concern is the density of this new development going from originally 80 to now they want to put 126. That's a big increase, adding more traffic. That's all I wanted to speak was traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Ross?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification on the video, what time of day was that video?
Oh, that was in the morning, and it gets that way in the afternoon, too.
It was about 8 o'clock.
Yeah, it was about 8, between 7:30 and 8 o'clock. Weekday, yes, yes. It gets that way in the evening, on the weekends, it's that way also.
Any other?
Oh, can I mention too, I don't want to lose my time.
No, go ahead.
The ballpark, we're coming into that season, they reroute their traffic down El Mirage, and it gets really packed up for a couple of miles.
I'm reminding everybody, I live two miles away from this.
Do you?
Totally aware.
You're aware of the traffic on El Mirage.
I'm less and less of a Dodger fan every year.
Oh. Don't blame you.
I saw you in the video.
Any other questions for Ms. Ross? Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for that video. We have, and then next, Victoria Valenzuela, got about, about a half a minute left, if you'd like to come on down and join us, like those old Federal Express commercials, you know, or the guy would read really fast.
USPS employee, so.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for giving us her time. My husband, Greg, and I live directly north of the proposed at Seasons at Riverside on 12346 West Maryland. Along with our neighbors, we have much concern of traffic, but what I want to leave with you, since we have limited time, is I want to put it more in perspective that all of us have bought a home at some point in time. We all have a choice of what type of home, what type of acreage, what type of community, what type of subsidiary we're going to live in. So when we purchased our home, along with our other neighbors that are outside the blue area that the applicant has shown, we were able to purchase the acreage and build a home that was consistent with the characteristics that have been there for over 30 years, and changing those characteristics of the well-established community is going to impact us by a lot of other things that my neighbors have also said, and the meetings we've had, and the letters we've done. So I ask for you to just think back to that first home that you purchased, you had that choice, you had the choice to live there, and if we are going to accept the proposals that the applicant has done now, you're taking away our choices of the well-established neighbors that live there on the acreage homes. So that's what I wanted you to consider. Would you like to be in my position at 12346 West Maryland and see homes that are not consistent with the established neighborhood and with what we expected to grow for our families? Final thought, the schools, they're already congested. My children go to those schools, we've got over 30 people in one class to do additional houses in that facility area, it's just going to be really overwhelmed. So thank you, I appreciate it, I know we ran over.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Val.
Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, any questions for Ms. Valenzuela?
It looks like it. Mr. Chairman, I didn't, there's some other speaker slips, and I know it's the 10-minute rule, but I'm going to, I'll give a little bit more time to the applicant, too, because I think I've got a couple of questions for him. Is there anyone that lives in this neighborhood that's just, oh my God, I'm just dying to come up here and tell Supervisor Hickman something nice first? But, but something that, Allison, you had your, boy, you had your shot. But, because I really appreciate the residents coming and getting on El Mirage Road and risking their life to come on I-10 and risk their life to come down here and pay overpriced parking fees to the city of Phoenix to let, to make sure that their opinion is heard. So I don't have any, any questions for you. If somebody else is just dying to come up here, I'm willing to listen, but a lot of these things were talked about by not only the applicant, but also Allison and Carol when they came, came to me. So if that's, if that's good, okay, because I don't want to take the right of somebody that, that really feels like there's a central topic that got missed, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, your last mentioning about, what would I feel like? Well, I felt like that three times in my life, moving a farm, from 67th and Missouri to 91st and Orangewood, where it was, some of you were living out there, coming to our little egg store, because it was, it was you, it was Hickman's family farms, and it was Luke Air Force Base. That was about it. So I am totally, I'm totally compassionate for, for your vision. But you have to, you guys also have to realize, growth, you've been able to put it and push it away, but growth is coming, you know, and maybe the, maybe the egg farms and the farmers feel it first, but pretty soon, the long-term residents start feeling it, too, with, with other houses coming. I am going to bring up Brandon a little bit, also to hear a couple of things. I did see, thank you for the understanding about the water tables and stuff, but, but know that we have a problem, all of us, all of our districts have a problem with lot splitters that makes the, make the water situation that much worse, and that's what I could be looking at right now with, with a developer that, or a property owner that decides to start trying to lot split. I'm also running into some issues now with municipalities and, and strip zoning, and how they do not want to annex in areas unless it is commercial or revenue-producing, and they want nothing to do. There's a big dog with the last name of Dale next to you guys, and now we're in this planning district, and they do not want to annex unless it's commercial or manufacturing, if it's jobs or if it's revenue-producing. They want nothing to do with housing, and we need to get, we need to start figuring that one out, and I have been. Brandon will tell you, and every developer that comes in here will tell you, that I am not for small lots. It doesn't, I do not believe that small lots and high density, that the county and unincorporated areas should necessarily be that person sponsoring these types of things. But the economy is changing, right? The economy is changing. You need to give starter homes somewhere. And I prefer, sure, I would prefer that these things all go into cities that are prepared for that, and that have law enforcement and fire, I would prefer that, but some things in the West Valley are just not turning out that way. So there's a lot of discussions in my office with developers and home builders, residents, talking about these, about these issues. So Brandon, I want to, I'm going to bring up a key topic that, that I found out firsthand, okay, in your area. I decided to go to that area as the charter school was getting let out, and outside of almost being hit by one of your parents and her giving me the dirty look, because she was trying to get past and try to hurry up and get in the traffic flow, it's like, it's getting murderous out there. So I understand the charter school's concern, but I also understand, a couple of years ago, the charter schools thought that was the best place for them to alight, and now we're complaining about the traffic and for the parents, but you put your, you put your charter school there. We can't put up signs right now, we don't own, we don't own the easement with that road. So I'd love to help you, I believe that's correct, I would love to help you, but I'm not going to go post a sign on property that doesn't belong to the county. But what might be coming gives us the opportunity to. So I am not a guy that kicks the can down the road, and I see my two former colleagues that I want to call out, Mary Rose Wilcox and Denny Barney are here joining us today to keep an eye on me, but I'm not a kick-the-can guy down the road, I haven't been. You guys, if, I know you've done your research, Allison, and you've probably looked at some of these other things, and it seems like I'm getting hit with infill projects every week. These guys get to take a pass sometimes, but they get to hear how this keeps continuing to go on in the West Valley all the time. I am not anti-growth, and I am pure private rights kind of guy. That landowner wants to do something with their land, just like you guys have been able to afford to do with your land over a series of years, they want to do something. They have to pay, somehow they have to be paid back for the infrastructure that has to go in. There's a, there's the possibility of... There's a, there's the possibility of amenity of that deep wash that goes right through that area. And I think kids, if done right, would probably enjoy that. But they have to put a certain number of units of homes on there to afford the infrastructure in order to make this an economically feasible neighborhood. So, but what I'm going to tell you is, and Brandon, if you have a problem with this, and I hope not, I'm going to kick the can down a little bit, down the road a little bit. I think that we can get a little bit closer, and I hope you guys agree with me. If you can't, I'm ready to roll right now, Allison. Carol?
Yes.
Okay. But what I heard loud and clear is that you don't, you want to keep banging down the number of, of homes, right? Because of traffic concerns and everything else. I have my own traffic concerns, but with them coming up and doing a project and doing work on Maryland that they're obligated to do, or could be obligated to do, I'm going to be talking to them a little bit about traffic. I'm getting the cart before the horse here with McDott. And I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for that community when it comes to traffic flow, the best that we can. Unfortunately, most of the time, so you guys understand, McDott will get involved after we've plotted it and after we've done that and do traffic studies and get everything prepared. So it's coming. I just want to tell the residents, it's coming. So we have a little bit of time, I hope, Brandon, to do this a little bit better, but I'm telling you guys, I'm not real interested in just saying, the only thing that's going to do it is just to knock the number of houses down and make them bigger and everything else, because that's not, that's not the product that's being sold in that area, and I'm not going to ask Richmond Homes or anyone else to, to, to do that. I had a concern also that they already listened to. The mining operation directly across the street. You guys have lived with that, you've dealt with it. But you also brought up, hey, do they, these residents even know that there's going to be loud noises, possibility of dust? Well, that speaks to me as a farmer, like, well, I'm used to having people not do that and come in here and start complaining until the point it forces out either the mining operation, the farm, or somebody else who is already owning, that they just want to stay in business. So we've started to work on a little bit more of a buffer in that neighborhood to, to make my concerns go a little bit away or become, hey, ma'am, buyer beware at this point. They were, they worked with that. They, they solved that issue. So Brandon, I'm, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to continue this for a little bit. My question is, do you feel that would be helpful to you as an applicant to take one more shot and at least let the residents know you're hearing the concerns, you're doing the best you can? I would hope that that would occur, and I would hope that this isn't just going to be a kick-the-can delay, and now, now it gives everybody the time and the residents to really get behind it and get the black flag going and bring a pitchfork and a torch that my colleagues really don't want to feel like. Because if that happens, you can rest assured that I'll listen to everything again, and I'll just, I'll just go ahead and go for approval. Do you understand?
They've been willing to talk and negotiate and actually reduce the density with all they can do. So, yeah, I think that we can count to a spot where everyone is.
Brandon, it's time to be honest with me. What, what do you, what do you feel? What's your feelings right now? This is really odd for my colleagues to hear this, but, but, but go ahead.
Chair, through the chair, Supervisor Hickman, I will need to confer with my client, if you'll permit me one minute to visit with him.
Okay.
Oh, Brandon. Sorry. Chair, Supervisor Hickman, we are agreeable to a continuance.
Okay. When's, when's the, when's the next formal board meeting?
February 27.
February 27. Allison, that give you a little bit more time to just kind of talk in here, a little bit more concerns. February 27. And keep calling you Brandon. I have a, I have a nephew, Brandon, so sorry, Brandon. I'm sorry about that.
I've certainly been called worse.
Well, if you were going to make, make a different answer, you would have been called much worse. So good luck to you guys. Bring me back something that I can get. But I'm telling you, Allison and Carol, I'm most of the way here. And I'm, I'm granting this, a little, take a little bit more shot, make the product just a little bit better, but growth is coming, okay? All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this case to the formal February?
27.
27 date.
All right. I have a motion to continue until February 27.
Oh, and one last thing, I'm sorry. And Mitch, can you please make sure you're engaged in this when it comes to the traffic and just kind of figure out if there's any stipulations that we can put further to allay the concerns of, of the charter school is also with, when it comes to street light and markings? Can you at least weigh in on that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. I'm happy to share some of the other words and names that Mr. Ray has been called, if the audience would like to, like to hear that, knowing him the way I do. But with that, I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri. So we have a motion to continue until February 27. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, again, to everyone who joined us, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give everyone a second to clear out of the auditorium who, who would like to, and then we'll proceed with the agenda. And as we move on with the agenda, I would also echo Supervisor Hickman's comments. Really pleased to see just barely former Supervisor Barney joining us today. Thank you very much for being here, as well as a former Supervisor Wilcox. Great to see you both. Next item is for Clerk of the Board, liquor license applications. We have 5A is new license for glossy heifer, 5B through E, special event licenses for nights of Columbus Council, 12144 Theater West, Southwest Wildlife Conservation Center and Recreation Centers of Sun City West. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on these items?
I have none for those items, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So at this time, the board will consider items 5A through E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 5A through E.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us on to statutory hearings. Clerk of the Board, number six, this is formation of the proposed Orchid Park Irrigation Water Delivery District. Do we have any comment, any speaker slips on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, River Pipes is here in favor and will speak if necessary.
Okay. Well, thank you. Would you, would you like to come and speak? Thank you. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you. One, thank you for allowing us to go forward with the process of collecting the signatures for our petition. I've been running the subdivisions, water irrigation stuff now for 25 years.
Wow.
So when I had to go out and collect money from people a couple of, well, over the last year for some huge repairs, we finally decided that this was the thing to do. And I think you'll see that with the percentage of people that did sign. I think we're like at 73% said, yes, we should do this. We do have non-takers, but they also are like, okay, you know, we like the green space. We just didn't want to vote for taxes if everybody else said no. So I know I have more percentage than even what you see on the petitions. So if you would approve it today, that would be terrifically appreciated. That's it.
Well, wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks for your work on this. Any questions from my colleagues? All right. Well, so with, with that, we, I would entertain a motion to approve item number six.
Motion to approve item number six, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Still moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next few items are transportation items. Perhaps we've got now number 11. On that one, this is actually up in, up in District 3. And at this time, you know, I would certainly entertain a motion to continue this particular item to February 27, if any of my colleagues would be willing to make that motion.
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri and Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of that motion to continue, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion to continue passes unanimously. So then that leaves us with items seven through 12. These are patent easement abandonment. This is for the remaining road files, PAB 0064, 0087, 0089, 0090, and 0086. Do I have a motion on this item?
So, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12.
Excellent. Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. All in favor of approving these items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. This now takes us on to the county attorney items. 13, amend agreement with the U.S. Marshals Service. Item 14, official appointments and oaths of office. And item 15, request for review over baseline. Do I have a motion on these items?
Still moved.
All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second with a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Please proceed.
We are now, I think, embarking on what will be several over-the-baseline requests this morning. And as you know, as chair now and, and trying to budget what we're about to approve here in the coming months, it's, it's a challenge, and this number is very, very big. It's $135 million, I think, in total. And I would just highly suggest to our fellow elected colleagues that, that run over, that run these other departments and do so very well, that I do not foresee us being able to acknowledge nor approve these types of, of over-the-baseline requests. So I'm not trying to suggest that we're putting anyone on notice. I'm just simply saying that I don't see how we bridge this gap.
Supervisor Chukri, thank you very much for that comment. And Supervisor Hickman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the great part is, you're getting a baptism by fire on some of these things as, as we've, we've been blessed. At least most of us have been blessed with being a chairman during a budget process. Sometimes these things need to come up during your chairman, instead of maybe taking a little bit of time and then making another request of another chairman of things that we've already looked at. So I want to be extremely, I think my comments over years and years of time, as we, I've called these out solely for the fact is, let's, let's continue to take a look at these. This year's request of going over, over baseline budget is not very tenable to me. So I'm going to be very, very candid and, and open. So I'm going to ask some questions today. So my first question is, with the county attorney's request for review over baseline, there's a number here for four vehicles. And I just wanted to ask Joy, there was a fleet study associated with this, or the county attorney could, and their group could participate in a fleet study that most of the other counties, or most of the other county does when it comes to items like this. My question to you is, is, is there participation in this fleet study as of yet?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, unfortunately, the county attorney's office has declined to participate in that study, and they are the only office or elected office that has declined to participate at this point. We're hoping they'll reconsider.
Okay. Thank you. I hope they do, too.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I, I really appreciate my colleagues pointing out this issue as it relates to the request over baseline. You know, again, this is my first time as chair, so referred to as baptism by fire, but I have taken the time to look back at the past few years, and these are historically high numbers. So again, I would echo the comments of both my colleagues here. There's a lot of need throughout the county, a lot of great things that people want to work on. There, we have a tight labor market, all these things, and we've, we've got to balance all of these concerns. That's our responsibility. And, you know, this isn't, this isn't the Oprah Show. Everybody doesn't get, you know, exactly what they're looking for. So that's just how it's going to be, but we look forward to working cooperatively with all of the countywide electeds in, in the weeks ahead. So thank you to both of my colleagues for their comments. With that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Next, we have sheriff's items. 16, authorization to trade surplus aircraft parts. 17, annual renewal of deep undercover vehicle registrations. 18, detect financial crimes task force MOU with Internal Revenue Service. 19 is the IGA with the City of Buckeye. 20 is one-time additions to Rico Fleet. 21 is establish administrative bank account. And 22 is request for review of items over baseline. Do I have a motion with respect to items 16 through 22?
Still moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo.
I'll, I'll second with a question.
Thank, thank you for the, the second, Supervisor Hickman, please.
On item number 22, the sheriff's office requests for review over items budget. That's a significant increase. You've touched on it. I'm going to, sorry, but I'm going to just keep touching on them to make sure we have some vision on this. Another question for Joy. $26,280,000 plus 3, 9.4 set aside for non-departmental detention, detention contingency. This is a very large increase, but I know that we have a, a new ITR coming up, and I know that there's going to be staffing needs for that. So does this address, does this overlap, or request for over baseline address the staffing of the ITR?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, the $9 million set aside is a request for 134 additional staff members, but we have not had the opportunity to review that staffing study yet. I think we also need to go back to, you know, I think FY 2013 MGT had done a staffing study, and we need to see how people have been moved around. For instance, when the tents were closed, we assume those detention officers went somewhere. Where did they go? When Durango's closed, where will those officers go? We need to really see not only the staffing study that they prepared for the ITR, but also the logistics and some of the previous moves of detention officers that have gone around. Because if this request is approved, they will need to hire almost 400 detention officers. We're very, very concerned, because we're about a year out in opening that facility. We need to work cooperatively together to figure out exactly what that need is and how we're going to get that facility safely staffed in time for that opening. So we're hoping to get more information and get it very quickly from the sheriff's office about the staffing.
Another, another question for Joy. The staffing study, when it was, when was it requested, or when was it started, and when should that report have been given to you? Do you, I mean, does, I don't know how staffing studies usually go when it comes. I don't know if there's a timeframe, but at least there needs, I would assume there's a timeframe, because we're going into budget, and now it's being, some of these items are going to be due to this request for more money. So how do we, how does the board look at that if we don't get a chance to see a sta, the staffing study?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, I don't know when the sheriff's office started the staffing study. If you'll remember, during budget presentations and subsequently during your chief's officer's budget presentations, they weren't going to request these positions yet. So I assume that meant that the staffing analysis hadn't been completed at that point. I will tell you previously, when we've opened facilities like LBJ and Fourth Avenue, they were done about two years out. So we absolutely do need to get looking at this. We need to bring a third party in to vet those numbers, and so that's why I hope that the message will be, when we look at this, now's the time to, you know, for us all to start digging into those numbers and come to some resolution on this.
Mr. Hickman, if I might. Mr. Chairman, I think what Mr. Hickman is saying, and I agree, is that we don't wake up in Maricopa County in the morning and wonder what to do. We have plenty to do. And the reason why we have made the reforms we have made over the past six years is because of these very types of studies. So whether it's the county attorney not wanting to participate in this vehicle study or not getting these, we, we don't have time. And, and so we need our fellow colleagues and electeds to, to come along with us, or else they're going to be left behind, because we can't, we don't have time to waste. And so I hope we can, as a board, be unison in, in sharing that concern with our, our And so I hope we can, as a board, be unison in sharing that concern with our fellow electeds that if we don't, if they don't get ready, that we're going to make decisions without the proper inputs.
Thank you for that comment. I agree Supervisor Chukri, and thank you for your insightful questions Supervisor Hickman. So with that, do we, we had a motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, perfect.
No, he made it, you second.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to items 23 through 27. We have for school superintendent, amend contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc. Under the treasurer's office, we have 24, application for treasurer's deeds on behalf of the state of Arizona, and 25, request for review of items over baseline. Adult probation 26, grants for FY 2019. And in the justice court 27, we have appointment of justice of the peace pro temp. Do I have a motion to, with respect to items 23 through 27?
So moved.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second with another question.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Hickman.
If anybody's getting tired of hearing me question, I'm about tired of myself too. So at this point, this will be my last question. When it comes to the treasurer's office, request for review of items over baseline, that's a pretty significant chunk again. And what is the percentage of this increase based on their total budget? And now they're asking for, would you happen to know what that is?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, you've stumped me on that one, but Cindy Geltz is here, and I think she probably could offer, is it?
Cindy, if you can join us, thank you.
Have the question rephrased for Cindy?
Okay.
And Cindy, as you're coming down, if Supervisor Hickman, if you want to kind of restate that question?
I'm trying to remember if this was to, no, it's general fund, okay. So on the review over baseline budget, and the review asked for $2.8 million, what is the percentage of increase over their usual general fund?
Chairman gave Supervisor Hickman, I believe it's probably close to 50% increase. I think their operating budget's in the $4 million range.
Thank you.
And thank you Cindy, and thanks for everything that you're doing. Again, I'm having this first opportunity as the chairman to go through this process, and you do incredible work for us, along with your whole team. So thanks for joining us. Thanks for your great work. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to juvenile probation. Item 28, grants for FY 2019. Superior Court, number 29, grants for FY 2019. And on assistant county manager, we've got number 30, amended certification and assurance for Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program. Do I have a motion on items 28 through 30?
Motion to approve items 28 through 30, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman for the motion. Thank you Supervisor Chukri for the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under air quality, number 31, amend right of entry and access agreement for air quality monitor. Animal care and control, we've got 32 through 34. We have donations. Thank you very much for these generous donations from various donors, Abyssal, Pet Foundation, and Matty's Fund. Do I have a motion with respect to items 31 through 34?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri for the motion, and Supervisor Gallardo for the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're heading on to correctional health. Thirty-five, the MOU with Mercy Care. Under county administration, we have number 36, request for review over baseline for the county manager's office. Under emergency management, we have 37 and 38, amend agreements with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. And under enterprise technology, 39 is request for review over baseline. The board will now consider items 35 through 39.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much Supervisor Chukri for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us on now to items 40 through 46. Under equipment services, 40 is determination of the IGA with the city of Buckeye regarding cooperative use of fuel. Under finance, we have 41, which is revisions to the finance countywide policies. And under human services, 42 through 46, amend agreements with the Arizona Community Action Association, Arizona Public Service, Guadalupe Community Development Corporation, Arizona Department for Economic Security, and the city of Avondale. Do I have a motion with regard to items 40 through 46?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 40 through 46.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. All in favor of these items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go and do our continuing with human services. Forty-seven is the Estoppel Certificate to Lease Agreement with Barr JCR Phoenix Flex Investors, Inc. Forty-eight is donations. Under parks and recreation, we have 49 is competition impracticable to the EPS Group. And then under procurement services, 50 is plumbing services contracts. 51, adaptive reuse project. And 52 is flood control building HVAC upgrades contract. Do I have a motion for items 47 through 52?
Motion to approve items 47 through 52.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of items 47 through 52, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that passes unanimously as well. Now we move on to public defense. And if I'm not mistaken, I think this is our last request for review over baseline. Public health, 54, administrative update to lease agreement for new owner. 55, purchase order for IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Under real estate, we have 56, which is an agreement with the SRP for radio site. And under transportation, 57 is an annexation by the city of Chandler. And 58 is easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Do I have a motion for items 53 through 58?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo and Supervisor Chukri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. And next, we have Board of Supervisors. Items 59 is appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. 60 is reappointment to the self-insured benefits trust fund board of trustees. And 61 is reappointment to the Citizens Audit Advisory Committee. Under industrial development authority, item 62 is a resolution approving the issuance of bonds for the benefit of Heritage Academy, Inc. Do I have a motion for items 59 through 62?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we're moving into the setting of hearings. Under clerk of the board, we have 63, which is proposed Gibraltar Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District Impact Statement. And 64 is a road, or road de-annexations from the city of Buckeye. Under planning and development, we have some planning and zoning cases. We have the Plains-Bumstead Terminal Facility, this is the military compatibility permit. Then under Plains-Bumstead Terminal Facility, there's an SO, SUP removal on Portion site. And then also, we have a Dollar General at Jack Rabbit. Do I have a motion to approve items 63 through 65?
Motion to approve items 63 through 65.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of the motion approving items 63 through 65, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We continue on setting of hearings. Under transportation, we have items 66 through 69, which are some road files. We have number 5933, 5923, 5934, and A610. Do I have a motion to approve items 66 through 69?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. All in favor of items 66 through 69, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now we move into the consent agenda. We have a number 70, duplicate warrant. 71, stale dated warrant. 72 is minutes. 73 is a head start monthly report. 74, civil penalty appeals. 75 is the precinct commitment. 76 is secured and unsecured tax roll corrections. And 77 is settlement and resolution of property tax cases and claims. The board will now consider items 70 through 77.
Move for approval, items 70 through 77.
Thank you for that motion Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Motion and a second on items 70 through 77. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now we're going to recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors, and we're going to consider item F1, which is a bid and award for McMillan Dam Outlet Channel Phase One. Do I have a motion in favor of F1?
Motion to approve item F1, and thanks to the hard work for flood control. This is, this is an important, important piece of infrastructure out there that protects Luke Air Force Base among other communities. So thank you for your hard work.
Here, here. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second in favor of F1. If you're, those in support of F1, please stay aye.
Aye.
Stay aye by saying aye. Stumbling all over that one. Let's go ahead and adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Now we're going to convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors. And we have item S1, which is a quarterly report from AZPB Limited Partnership. Is there a motion in favor of item S1?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you very much Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. All in favor of this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're going to adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and convene as the Housing Authority of Maricopa County. We've got two items under Housing Authority. H1 is a resolution and establishment of bank accounts. And H2 is a resolution in contract with Absolute Comfort Cooling and Heating. Do I have a motion in favor of H1 and H2?
Motion to approve items H1 and H2, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to adjourn as the Housing Authority of Maricopa County, and we're going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. And we're going to consider A1, which is the Board of Supervisors District One Vacancy Appointment. And before I turn to my colleagues for motion and any comments, just wanted to say a few brief words. Again, thank you Supervisor Barney for being here today. I think it's really, really special of you to take the time to be here. And again, we thank you for your incredible service during your six years in District One. But unfortunately, we have to turn the page, and we wish you the very best as you move forward, as we did here recently. But as many of you know, we had some, a very strong pool of applicants. We had 13 applicants with varied background, public service, either at the state legislature, serving on city councils, and then many community leaders, business leaders in District One. Very, very impressive group of individuals, very challenging for, of course, this, this body to choose one out of 13 such strong applicants. And on behalf of the whole board, I just want to thank Madam Clerk and your entire team for your great work throughout this process. And again, just really do appreciate that. So with those comments, I would turn to my colleagues and see if we would have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we make a motion, I also just want to just echo some of your comments. Thank you, Danny. It was an honor to be able to serve with you. I know we had fun on your last board meeting here. Thank you so much. I have my clock, and to note the record, I was on time today. It was my colleague.
He was the second, second member here on the dais.
Yeah, so thank you so much for your assistance on that. But no, this has been just, I guess, an exciting process. We have 13 candidates. I had the opportunity of meeting with many of them. Great people, and these are always tough decisions. I'm not as familiar with, with the East Valley and many of the applicants that submitted their names, so it was kind of a challenge on my part just to kind of get to know them and, and get to know the lay of the land out there in the East Valley as fast as I can. Received many phone calls from across the East Valley of folks throwing their support behind, behind one candidate or another. But I just want to thank the candidates that submitted their names and stepping up to take on this very important role. And I look forward to whoever gets appointed to be able to work with them and to tackle some of the issues, not only just in the East Valley, but countywide. So thank you, Danny, once again, and thank you for all the candidates that put in their names. It's been a great process.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, but before doing so, I was here by phone a few weeks ago, and thankfully, I got my ladmo bag from Mr. Barney. I was a little concerned as to when I would get that. But you know, I didn't have the chance in person to say it, but what a, what a man, what a friend, what a colleague. And he'll be missed, but as you said, we do have to move forward, and I think we have to move the county forward in a way that we've been able to the past six years and accomplished so much. And it's, I think it's, there's a beauty and an irony to having Mary Rose here as well today when we're making this appointment, because you know, she, she was helping us along the way make the massive changes that we have for, for Maricopa County. So with that, I too think this process and meeting these 13 individuals has been very gratifying to see the measure and interest in our county. And I, and I think the Arizona Republic even had said that this is one of the, the great opportunities to serve in public office, just right here in our fourth-largest county. So I, I'm excited, I'm encouraged. We will certainly miss our colleague, Danny Barney, but I think he'll be with us more than we realize with his new role. And with that, and I will have comments and remarks, I would like to nominate Jack Sellers to fill the District One vacancy.
All right, we have a motion to appoint Jack Sellers as the new District One Supervisor. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion.
All right, thank you very much Supervisor Gallardo for that second. And I'll turn it back to you Supervisor Chukri with some comments.
You know, I've, I've had the opportunity to work, and I think many of us have in our various capacities on MAG and others. And Jack and I go back to probably almost 13 or so years. I first met Jack in about 2003 or 2004. My family was in the car business. He worked for GM coincidentally. Didn't always agree then, did we, Jack? But we certainly worked well together. And as we were looking at how best to come to what has been a very difficult decision, when you look at Mr. Sellers' background, his, his time on the Chandler City Council, his investment on our, the Transportation Board for the state, the needs that we're going to be having coming our way in Maricopa County, it just, it seemed as though the pieces of the puzzle just fit. And so I think it's a tremendous honor. I will stop talking, and I think we'll go ahead and vote, and we'll hear from Mr. Sellers.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, any of my other colleagues like to make a comment?
Yeah, with the hit parade, Danny, thanks for, thanks for being here. It was, it was a real pleasure, and it's, you know, as I will tell Mr. Sellers and when he was in my office, going through this appointment process that I went through, and I see three of the votes that voted for me here in, in the building today. And how much I appreciated that, because you know, I, I was on a list of people that were very, very well-known in the political field, and I was what you would kind of view as a dark horse. And Jack's kind of like that, too. There's a lot of people that are, have called us and said, because of proximity, how they knew these candidates. I will tell you, Jack, that I was very happy to hear that, how holistically you look at the county. You know, I represent the furthest district away from, from District One and You know, I, I represent the furthest district away from, from District 1 and Danny's district, but it was always really good to get in here and see just how holistic all of us view the county, not just, not just region or district. And I, I hope that you'll have that, especially when it comes to the subject of, of transportation. I think you have some real skill that you can bring to the board with that. So I, I would also like to thank all the applicants. It's a nerve, it's a nerve-wracking experience, not just to go out and get elected and run and meet new people, but when it comes to, when it comes to the appointment process, you know, how, how to show yourself in a very limited timeframe on, on just what kind of person you're gonna be. So I, I wanna thank all the applicants. I think the chairman touched on it. There was excellent individuals that decided to put their name in for this, and it was, and it made it a really hard decision, because honestly, almost from top to bottom, there was a lot of strengths and very few weaknesses. So it was, it was, it was a hard, it was a hard pick, I think, for all of us where we're getting here, just, but that, it's a great pick, because you want it to be hard. You don't, you don't want one person that's, that's good and the rest bad. It's nice to see, you know, that, that many people that were good and, and love the, love the East Valley and love District 1 like, like Danny has and will, and, you know, always will. So with that being said, I'm, I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues, and I would echo what everyone has said with Mr. Sellers, with the, the background, serving on city council. I think that's, that's very helpful as we deal. We've had a lot of planning and zoning cases recently, I think that experience is very valuable, and I appreciate the background you have with the State Transportation Board. And we spoke about your desire to work on and emphasize a smart infrastructure and autonomous vehicles, and that's one of my priorities, and I know my colleagues share that. So with that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations Supervisor Sellers. And Supervisor Sellers, if you could join us up here, or Madam Clerk will administer the oath, and then you're certainly welcome to make a few remarks, but after that.
If you would repeat after me. Is this mic on?
Yes.
I, Jack Sellers.
I, Jack Sellers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
I'm sorry. I will, according to the best of my ability.
According to best my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Just sign right there. I can have you sign.
Well, I'm very excited. What an honor and privilege it is to be appointed to serve on this outstanding board. I'm in my, in my final year on the State Transportation Board, I'm serving as Chair, and I feel like we are at a point right now where the next several years is going to be critical for us in defining our transportation infrastructure for the future. And I, I felt some concern going into my last year on the State Transportation Board about how I was going to be able to play a key role in that. And now I feel that serving on this board gives me, gives me the opportunity to do that, and I'm really excited and looking forward to that. I know the board does a lot of other things. Transportation is something I, I enjoy, something I've been involved in forever. As you, as most of you know, I've served on MAG for the last 10 years. I'm involved with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, and of course, the State Transportation Board, and I, I feel like there, there's not a better opportunity for me today than to serve on this board. So I thank all of you for your encouragement and support, and I will do everything I can to help you decide that you made the right decision.
Well, thank, thank you very much. Congratulations. Before we have you come up here and join us on the dais, we'd like to see if we could get a picture with you and the rest of the board.
Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you.
the house that would like to join in for a picture? Can we invite them?
I think there might be a couple.
Those that we complain for appointing Hickman.
And most importantly, I have Supervisor Sellers' key to his office.
And then Supervisor Hickman, if we want to, we'll just do one of the boardroom.
Okay.
Okay, so we will jump into the last two items we have here. We have item 78, which is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips?
There's all of these, and we want those to go in this.
Okay, perfect. All right, we have a few speaker slips. Thanks to everyone for joining us. Again, just as a reminder, we have two minutes per speaker, and also, under Arizona law, the board is not able to respond, but, you know, if, if appropriate, we can, we can refer questions to our county manager. So with that, we have our first speaker, Diane Barker.
Well, good morning, and I'm very happy to see the chairman and supervisors here, and I applaud the hole-in-one that you got by putting Gates here as the chairman. I've followed him from the city of Phoenix, and I can understand what he says, so we look forward to getting a lot of good business done. And Jack Sellers, you know, congratulations, and I know that one of the, the topics I follow is transportation, and who knows more than Jack Sellers, you know? So I was just kind of wondering if he was gonna stay on the state board still too, you know, is it appropriate for him to answer?
No, under Arizona law, we're not.
Right, and I don't wanna get my pink slip, but, you know, I do also want to applaud you for the guidelines, you know, I read them, I think they're concise, and you can respond to criticism also, send it to your staff, or put my item on the next agenda so you can talk about it and vote on it. And so, you know, my items, and I'm so excited for the downtown Phoenix now with the development and renovation of the Suns Arena. I know you follow that issue Supervisor, and I am looking forward to the heavyweights over at the DBAX and Frye's, who is a sponsor not only at the DBAX but at the Suns, to make collaboration of a wonderful sports facility that's not just spectator. You know, we don't need to have people sitting all the time, but participatory. And I know there's some land that the supervisors own, we could have a wonderful intermodal transportation center. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Next speaker is Joanne Scott Woods.
Excuse me. Good morning Chairman and Board.
Good morning.
I am speaking for the unlawful, speaking on the unlawful arrest and imprisonment of Stephen Baker, Kim Baker's son, will speak later, regarding four issues. Number one, racial profiling. Officers were looking for a black suspect after immediately arresting two suspects about an hour later, and after driving about three miles away, they arrested a black man walking on the sidewalk in his house slippers. Two, no probable cause. The officers did not check out his two verifiable alibis, the surveillance video that shows him at the QT during the burglary, and the technology within his cellphone that places him there also. Number three, unfair burden of cash bond on impoverished people. The Arizona Task Force of Unfair Justice for All calls for this as unconstitutional and recommends the expanded use of the Arnold Foundation's risk assessment tool to determine pre-trial release decisions to reduce unnecessary and unjust pre-trial detention. Number four, psychological effects. Psychological disorders and stigmatization, including suspicion from others, social isolation, and losing one jobs, which happened to Mr. Baker's son. Exonerations have been compared to trauma victims, and wrongful imprisonment also meets the definition of torture, leaving prison with the same symptoms. Thank you for your public service in establishing policy that respects and restores dignity for all.
Thank you Ms. Woods. Next is Kim Baker.
Good morning, Mr. Gates and the board. This is difficult, and I come to you guys because the county attorney's office owns all of this now. My son contemplated suicide in your county jail. 69 days he was imprisoned, only to later be exonerated by his cellphone, that he was never at the cellphone store that got robbed. This hurts as a dad. You guys have no idea what it's like to be a father of an African-American man in the United States right now. He's walking down the street, and because he's African-American, he's arrested for this. He was, he was charged with serious crimes, felonies, every last one of them. My son didn't even like BB guns growing up. I couldn't get him to shoot a BB gun, and he was charged with robbery. I knew the charges were malicious. Bill Montgomery needs to be ashamed of himself. If my son's cellphone had not through those towers pinged him nowhere near this vicinity, he would still be going through the system and possibly facing a trial now. This hurts to the core my existence. My son was contemplating suicide, and word got to me, I called the county jail, spoke to a sergeant, they pulled him out and had a long talk with him. The county owns all of this.
Thank you Mr. Baker for coming down and, and telling us your story. Leonard Clark?
Good to see you again. Thank you, Chairman.
Good to see you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just am here because, first of all, I want to, I did not know that Mr. Baker would be speaking, but hearing that terrible, horrible events that occurred with his son, I not being African-American will not ever know what it's like to suffer that type of injustice, so I just, I reaffirm I pretty much everything he said. I'm here because I also want to raise up the level of safety for our public officers and our community. Right now, there's so much anger, as you know, the social media, you have folks who are speaking out through it, but others who are not so nice, whether they're left or right, imploring violence and all of these things. So I'm thinking with Bill Montgomery, it's been in the news, I'm not sure if it was Channel 15 announced that, that he might be re-examining the tasing incident of the gentleman who was wrongfully jailed in the county jail for three months approximately. City of Glendale refuses to do anything, and I'm just hoping that Bill Montgomery, you know, all of these things that have happened under him, that he will re-look at this case, because right now, the City of Glendale and the mayor last night at their meeting are, you know, totally backing that. But the officers, I want them to be safe. Many officers put their lives on the line and have been killed, you know, trying to protect our community, but many people are dying now. And I really think that rather than just being, you know, one side hates and loves and, you know, the police, that we need to, that we need to do something. So thank you so much, I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you Mr. Clark, good to see you. Next, we have Supervisor Mayor, former Supervisor Mayor Rose Wilcox. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you very much, and because it takes off my two minutes, I won't go into detail about each of, every one of you. But I just wanna say, it's a lot of fun being here with you today. I have a serious matter though. You all know, and you know me very well, that the Melenders case was one that our community fought very hard and won in federal court. We are here today, and I'd ask everybody to raise their hands real briefly, as a community of organizations and individuals who will be delivering a letter to you. Recently, there was a federal court hearing on the status of the Melenders case orders, and Sheriff Penzone attempted to modify the order. The sheriff asked the judge, and Mary Snow said, no way, this order stands, and we're gonna implement it. We also heard from your attorney Walker, who asked that the order be appealed, they were gonna appeal it to the Supreme Court. We are here to ask that you not appeal it, you drop that appeal, and instead put your efforts to working with Penzone to satisfy this order. The fear is if it is not satisfied, and I know the millions of dollars that have been spent, I was here, I had to issue a lot of them. I would like to see this come to an end for the citizens of Maricopa County, and ask you to work with Sheriff Penzone, and I know you have, you, in this year's budget, there's 23 million for it, but I would ask that you expedite it, and that we have a status hearing on where exactly we are in the lawsuit, and how long it will take to implement these orders. I've talked with Supervisor Gallardo, who's my supervisor, and he has said that he will be putting on the agenda with all of your concurrence, a status report so the community can hear exactly where we are and exactly how long it'll take to complete it. The judge is not gonna modify it, and we ask that you work with each other, work with Penzone, and work with the community to put an end to the outflow of money that's going out, and once and for all, put an end to all racial profiling. out and once and for all, put an end to all racial profiling, which the order demands. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being with us today. Thanks for your work in the community and coming on this important issue. Next, we have Ralph Martinez.
I just want to say you run a good ship.
Oh, well, thank, thank you.
My name is Ralph Martinez and Chairman and members, I take a minute just to read this letter if I may. The undersigned organizations, elected officials, individuals, and community groups represent, among others Latinos and indigenous community people who live and work in Maricopa County. For many years, our communities were terrorized by Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, which systemically engaged in racial profiling of Latino motorists and indigenous people, rounding up our family members and friends in violation of federal law, the U.S. Constitution, and international human rights law. An arduous and painful trial, Melendres versus Arpaio, revealed that the sheriff's office flouted the rule of law and violated our rights. The trial exposed widespread abuses of power, lack of proper law enforcement policies, lack of meaningful supervision, lack of effective training, lack of impartial internal affairs investigations, and other critical institutional shortcomings. Our community fought hard for the relief in federal courts and we won. Federal judge condemned, I'm sorry, commanded the sheriff's office and the county to stop racial profiling of Latino motorists and ordered an overhaul of the many offending agency operations. After the sheriff's office refused to comply with these initial federal court instructions, the judge held MCSO leaders in contempt of court and issued another court order requiring the agency to make additional improvements. We were dismayed to learn recently that the county is continuing to fight the court, ordered, the court ordered issues after contempt findings. We don't understand why the county would insist on appealing this matter to the Supreme Court, especially considering that Sheriff Paul Penzone is no longer challenging the order, but insists in modifying and modifying it despite being told by the judge he will not modify the court order. Why are you wasting limited taxpayer funds on additional legal fees which would be better spent helping MCSO follow the court's directives? Are you denying the harm the sheriff's office caused our community?
Mr. Martinez, if you can wrap up please, your time's expired.
Okay. Our community group demands that the Board of Supervisors stop fighting the court order. Instead, put county support behind MCSO to making sure that our agency has the resources it needs to fully and properly comply. By encouraging MCSO to improve the operations, it's, the Board of Supervisors can help ensure the
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
constitutional violations will never again happen. Thank you.
Salvador Reza, thank you for joining us today.
How you doing? My name is Salvador Reza. I'll be very brief and I'll just say, if you don't know your history, you're doomed to, you're doomed to repeat it. Becoming, whether you know it or not, you're part of an attempt by Judicial Watch, by Fair, by the anti-immigrant lobbies of the United States of America with Donald Trump to get rid of the monitor program at the federal level. This is an expert, a perfect opportunity for them to actually take it all the way to the Supreme Court and use it as part of their agenda. I don't know if you know that or not, but you, by not, by appealing to the Supreme Court that your name as county Board of Supervisors with, as part of the Melendres case, you're actually allowing them to do that. They're trying to do that. Also, you're, you're wasting our money. I mean, all the sheriff Penzone has to do is actually comply with the court order. Now he's going back to the court and actually trying to change the, the, the order, the conditions of the order. When the judge told him, "No, save your money and appeal it to the Supreme Court because I'm not going to change the order," yet Sheriff Penzone insists on taking on Judge Snow the same way that Joe Arpaio used to do it. My God, when are we going to learn? And when are you going to learn not to support this type of agenda like you did with Sheriff Joe Arpaio? And at the end, the former Board of Supervisors got burned. They got burned. So just in, in, in conclusion, please, please, don't make us come out in the streets again. Please, I'm, you know, we don't like to do that, but we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reza. Appreciate you joining us. Next, we have Donna Florencia Gonzalez. Please, thank you for joining us.
Buenos dias. Yo no hablo ingles. Alguien me puede traducir?
Um, do we, do we, oh, can you translate? Thank you so much Erica, appreciate it.
Si, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Florencia Gonzalez.
My name is Florencia Gonzalez.
Vengo de Tona Tierra.
I'm from Tona Tierra.
Estamos hartos y cansados de las arbitrariedades, de que no somos respetados nuestros derechos humanos.
We're tired of not having our, our
Necesitamos que nuestros derechos humanos como personas seamos respetados, nuestros derechos civiles, nuestros derechos indígenas.
Civil rights.
Seamos como seamos, morenos o cafeses, todos tenemos, hacemos
No matter what color of skin we have.
con el mismo derecho. Y queremos que los aguaciles que heredó Arpaio al señor Penzone sean cambiados por otros que sean mejores, que no sean tan arbitrarios.
We want the sheriff deputies that were under Arpaio to be different under Sheriff Penzone.
Necesitamos que, que las, las leyes, estamos de acuerdo en la ley que, que rige aquí, pero estamos de acuerdo en la revoltura que hacen, porque has de cuenta que hace una revoltura de las salsas chiles con los jitomates, porque revuelven la policía con inmigración y eso no es correcto.
They mix police work with immigration and that's not right.
El trabajo de la policía debe ser, ese es su trabajo, levantar infracción y lo que sea, pero no pasar la gente a inmigración.
Police work should be separate than immigration work.
Entonces queremos que eso se acabe, que haya un respeto, porque todos, vuelvo a decir, todos tenemos los mismos derechos. No es justo que el gobierno nos esté pisoteando nuestros derechos como quieren pues.
We all deserve human rights.
Y un lema que es muy viejísimo en México, yo quiero que cada quien lo practiquemos aquí, que se dice, Benito Juárez dijo, "El respeto al derecho ajeno es la paz."
Gracias. Benito Juárez said that respect is peace. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for joining us today. Thank you for taking time out of your day to speak on this important item. Next, we have Dr. Sylvia Herrera, please, if you can join us. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Unfortunately, it's, it's not a good news for our community, the affected community. I also like to identify myself on behalf of the Barrio Defense Committees that are grassroots communities and for ID purposes only, I'm part of the court ordered Melendres versus Penzone now, Community Advisory Board, known as A-CAB. Again, we're asking the county to be involved in that ongoing communication between yourselves and the MCSO. We have to hold MCSO accountable, there has to be oversight, there has to be the reporting of activities, not only just the reports, but to scrutinize those reports to see if it's actual factual and the implementation of those activities in order to comply with a court order. As has been stated, we don't want to repeat history. We don't want the county to be in the same place that it was with Arpaio, because that's the path that seems to be happening nowadays. We want to assure that MCSO doesn't go down that same path as Arpaio in challenging and defying the court orders as they are now, because then they're going to be held in contempt of court and we're going to have to start all over again. So please, as was requested, we want to make sure that there's a status report to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Next is Roberto Rivelis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Roberto Rivelis, resident of Gold Canyon, Arizona. As a plaintiff organization in Melendres versus Arpaio, Somos America has patiently worked to promote Judge Murray Snow's court order that works or seeks to eliminate the sheriff's office's racist culture along with its supportive infrastructure in order to rebuild trust of our community in Maricopa County's law enforcement, a task that is complicated when, after over five years and $90 million at taxpayers' expense, we witness the sheriff's office seeking changes in the court's order while not yet coming into compliance. Equally disturbing is the realization that this Board of Supervisors continues to add to its $90 million tab by apparently appealing to the U.S. Supreme Court in opposition to Supreme Court, to the Circuit Court of Appeals finding that the county is liable for these ongoing costs related to Sheriff Joe Arpaio's violations. These delays and these additional costs to the taxpayers are cruel reminders that justice delayed is justice denied to our community victims of racial profiling. Without questioning your integrity, we challenge you to demonstrate to the public that you genuinely respect the rule of law, regardless of how difficult it is. Stop delaying the court ordered changes in the sheriff's office. Stop spending taxpayers' dollars in futile appeals. Use the public's resources to fund and expedite the curative changes mandated by the courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivelis. Esther Duran Lum?
Good morning.
Good morning. It's really cold in here. Chairman of the Board and the rest of the Board, good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. This has been a long time that we have been fighting against the injustices that occurred under Sheriff Arpaio. We elected Paul Penzone because we wanted change. So I'm asking very simply, please do not waste any more of our taxpayer dollars. Those are, those do not belong to this Board. They belong to all of us, all of us, and $90 million is a lot of money. We don't want you to waste any more money on this. And as Mr. Rivelis said, it's just a painful reminder of what we went through. So we ask you very simply, stop wasting our taxpayer money. We, I fully support what everyone that spoke before me said about what has occurred and the fact that we don't want to see it continue. So thank you for the opportunity to tell you that we will continue to monitor and I represent an organization called Uncage and Reunite Families Coalition, an organization of more than 20 organizations that want to see the separation of children stopped. You may wonder why I'm here under that particular organization, but it's all about justice and what is right. Stop what's wrong and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. And our last speaker is Rosie Lopez.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I am also here with this group. I'm with the Arizona Hispanic Community Forum and I have been, I had been at every hearing, the sessions that Judge Snow had over the years, and it is really dismaying to me that this Board is fighting us again, along with Sheriff Arpaio, I'm sorry, Sheriff Penzone now, but I say that I echo former Supervisor Mary Rose Wilcox's sentiments and all the rest of the group that spoke here. We don't want you wasting our taxpayer dollars. We want you to go ahead and see some justice here. Racial profiling is a long-going thing and we know that it doesn't end just like that. They need to continue. If Judge Snow said that it needs to continue, it needs to continue. Don't waste our taxpayer dollars on the Supreme Court. That is ridiculous. We will go through this all over again. And I was there, as I say, I was there at the court hearings and I felt so bad and one of the persons that was there victimized was Daniel Magos and he was so humiliated, he almost cried there and he said he was so humiliated. They pushed him against the car and that's what exactly continues to happen. Please do what is right and, and follow the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And that, that is our last speaker with public comments. So thank you to everyone who's taken the time to come and speak on this important issue. Just Supervisor Hickman, do you have a question?
Well, because we have a, we have a new Board member and he probably still doesn't know all the rules and everything, but I wanted to get this question out because this is starting to become public. And I'm aware of no request by the sitting Board of Supervisors to modify, or we've not given Board direction that I'm assuming. I'm going to ask Joy that, or maybe I ask our county attorney, but am I just all wet here? Have we requested the sheriff to modify the judge's orders?
Supervisor Hickman, I think
If you could just
I think it would be probably best for me to go back and look at what has come up in executive sessions
Okay.
and follow up with you on
Okay.
exactly what's been brought before the Board and then subsequently approved in open session.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject though, I have spoken with the county attorney's office because Supervisor Gallardo had raised this issue with me and you have not in any way authorized a modification of the order to be filed. There has been some talk, I think, between the sheriff and his attorneys about that sort of order, but if the question is, have you authorized any modification of the order or request to that to be resolved, the county attorney's office representative has assured me that you have not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those clarifications. And now we move on to 79, which is the opportunity for my colleagues to speak about any current events or other things going on in their district. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to our new colleague. Welcome. We don't have a plate for you yet, but we'll get you one. We'll have to put in a request to go above the baseline in order for us to pay for your plate. But we'll have to speak with Mr. Hickman about that. But no, nonetheless, congratulations. I, I look forward to working with you and, and I know we've met a couple of times, but I really would love to, to get to know you a lot better and, and see what we can do to work together. And coming up, this weekend is going to be definitely an exciting weekend for District Five. We have a couple of things going on in our, in our area. The Levine BBQ, which started off as a small little barbecue, has grown to be huge. So looking forward to the Levine BBQ will be out there, as well as there's a rodeo going on simultaneously at, at Corona Ranch, will be divided. So we're looking forward to that this weekend. Following weekend is the, is the annual AIDS Walk, which we'll be participating once again. We're looking forward to that as well. So those are a couple of things that's on our, on our list of, of activities over the next couple of weeks. But one of the things I do want to, going back to our, our folks that commented earlier in the past, this was the previous sheriff, we had, my office as well as Somos America would meet regularly to talk about what the county is, is doing in terms of complying with Melendres. We have not had an opportunity to meet since the new sheriff. I don't believe we have, but I think it's important for us to continue to meet. I would love to be able to, I think it's time that we sit down and talk and see where we're at in terms of the compliance, because I think that's a legitimate question and I want to be able to work with not only our county manager, but with your office as well, Chairman, to see what we can do in order to, to kind of give an update to the public. We did it, I think, my first year or two right here in the audit We did it, I think, my first year or two, right here in the auditorium, we did it with Somos and the community forum and so on, but I think it's time for us to kind of revisit that, where we're at on the compliance issue, particularly bringing the sheriff as well to talk about what, what they're doing. And I think that's an important topic. I'm glad you all came down to express your concerns, but in the future, it's something I'm looking to work with, and we'll, we'll definitely get some questions answered at that time as well. So, so rest assured that your comments are heard, we'll sit down, we'll talk. And then, to Mr. Baker, I know he left, would love to sit down and talk to him. Yeah, I would love to sit down and talk in regards to what happened. I don't know the details, this is the first I've heard, but love to be able to just sit down and share, share what happened, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo, and I look forward to the opportunity to sit down with you and talk about these important issues that were raised today. Joy Rich, our county manager.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd just like to welcome Supervisor Sellers and let you know we're here to support you as staff and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hickman.
Same is true. Welcome, Jack. I think, I think you're going to really like it here and working with this board. I really appreciated working with you at MAG Transportation, and I know you were, you were great there, so I expect great things out of you in this role. And I do want to let you know, there is a tradition of the new supervisor, when, when it goes beyond 11:30, he has to purchase lunch for the board. So, just thought I'd make you aware of that, it's 11:45.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Supervisor Sellers, would you like to add anything to your previous comments?
Well, I would just like to also express my appreciation for Denny Barney. He, he's been an outstanding supervisor, going to be big shoes to try to fill. He has offered to assist me as I move forward, and I will certainly take him up on that. So, thank you again. I'm so honored and excited to be here.
Excellent. Thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would echo, which I tend not to want to do too often with Mr. Gallardo's comments, that I was, I was concerned about some of the things we heard today in our meeting, and I think that we will not go back to some dark days that the county had, and secondly, that we need to make sure that we're responsible. When I heard the comments of the gentleman's son, that really did concern me, as it does all of us. So, we hear people, and I think sometimes in these, these meetings, I think we do that pretty well, to be candid. We hear from our community, whether it was elections, or the items talked about today, or whatever else that we've heard in recent years, we listen. And so, I would look forward to trying to find some of these things out. And for Jack, jump in, the water's freezing, and we look forward to having you with us, and I think you're going to find, just like we all have, what a very special place Maricopa County is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Well said. Again, Supervisor Sellers, welcome. We're all looking forward to working with you. We've, we've got a lot going on right now, and you're the right person for the job at this time, and, and you have my full commitment, whatever you need to get up to speed as soon as possible, because in fact, we have an executive session this afternoon. So, we're going to put you to work right away, and we already have. Just a couple announcements from my area. We were very fortunate at my, now, now that's a joke after the video, at my February Coffee Chat, we had a, we had a great meeting last week, we had our legislative update. So, we had Senator Heather Carter, Senator Kate Brophy McGee, and Representative Shawna Bolick, and gave us a great update on what was going on, wonderful questions from the audience, so thank everybody for coming out to that. I'll have my monthly meeting in New River next Tuesday over lunch hour, so everyone who wants to come, we always love that opportunity to hear what's going on up in the northern reaches of District Three. And just as one and two, wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow, a Happy Statehood Day, and it's the trifecta in the Gates House, because it's also my daughter's 18th birthday tomorrow.
Ooh.
So, so it's a big, it's, it's a big day. Thank you, everybody, for your attention today, your involvement in this meeting, and have a great rest of your day. We are adjourned.